Good evening. The meeting will start in five minutes. We will start in two minutes. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Please find a seat. We are going to start the hearing. Welcome to the New York City Housing Authority's public hearing on the draft fiscal year 2024 annual plan and the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2023 annual plan. I am Shauna Castillo, Senior Director of Resident Initiatives, and I will be your moderator this evening. Thank you for joining us for this virtual and in-person NYCHA public hearing. In a moment, I will introduce the interpretation services available this evening, both in the theater and for those who are joining us on Zoom. Then there will be a brief overview of the public hearing process, as well as the annual plan and significant amendment, introduction of NYCHA's board members, brief remarks from NYCHA CEO Lisa Bova Hyatt, and we will end with comments from those of you who are here tonight. There are sign language interpreters available for the deaf or hard-of-hearing, who will be visible on video and in person for the duration of this meeting. There are also Spanish, Russian, Mandarin, and Cantonese interpreters available by Zoom, by phone, and in person. Please visit the interpretation table in the lobby if you need assistance. We will first ask the interpreters who are in person to introduce themselves, beginning with Spanish, Russian, then Mandarin and Cantonese.
Thank you.
谢谢。现在我们， 我们， 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 我们，
Hola, bienvenidos. Buenas tardes. Bienvenidos a la audiencia pública de NYCHA. Si desean escuchar esta audiencia en español, por favor, marcan en sus teléfonos el seis cuatro seis cinco cinco ocho ocho seis cinco seis y entrar el código tres tres uno cuatro veinticinco ocho seis cuarenta signo numeral para interpretación en español, llamar al seis cuatro seis cinco cinco ocho ocho seis cinco seis y entrar el código tres tres uno cuatro dos cinco ocho seis cuatro cero signo numeral. Gracias. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dobry večer. Aitem zvaškamo nusnej usluge ruskogov revodžika. Vymojite pozvonit po telefonu šeset sot čarok šeset pет set petišet osim osim šeset šeset i posli toga kak vas sojenjat nabrat šemsoč četiri šemsoč šestjačet devet četiri šest osim rešetka. Povečarja, tem komo nusnej usluge ruskogov revodžika v Zoomi, možno nabrat po telefonu numer šeset čarok šeset pet set petišet osim osim šeset šestjačet šestjačet, a potom posli sojenjene nabrat šemsoč četiri šemsoč šestjačet devet četiri šest osim rešetka. Spasiba.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please note that the hearing is being recorded and transcribed by stenographers. Thank you all again for taking the time to attend our virtual and in-person public hearing. We appreciate that you have made this a priority and are here with us this evening. This public hearing is also currently being livestreamed on YouTube, and the recording of this hearing will be available on NYCHA's website after the hearing has concluded. In accordance with Section 5A of the United States Housing Act of 1937, as amended, housing authorities are required to develop with review and input from residents and the general public an annual plan for the coming year and gather input on the plan from residents and the general public. Federal law allows a public housing authority to modify or amend its annual plan. Significant amendments to the plan must also be shared in a public forum to provide residents and the general public the opportunity to comment. On May 26, 2023, NYCHA released the draft fiscal year 2024 annual plan and the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2023 annual PHA plan for public review. This amendment is for the fiscal year 2023 capital plan and the five-year action plan, as well as the following activities. Transfer policies: NYCHA is updating the definition of the preferences for apartment transfers to address situations in which tenants must be relocated for repair or renovation work, including when expeditious relocation is needed due to health, safety, or environmental concerns, or in connection with major modernization projects, for example, comprehensive modernization and the preservation trust. Public housing income limit requirements: By federal registrar notice dated July 26, 2018, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, issued instructions for implementing the mandatory public housing income limit requirements in the Housing Opportunity Through Modernization Act, HAPMA. These requirements apply only to the public housing program. HUD approved a significant amendment to NYCHA's fiscal year 2019 annual plan on June 19, 2019, which included a summary of NYCHA's public housing over-income policy. NYCHA has chosen to allow these households to remain in public housing, paying higher rent according to a HUD formula. On February 14, 2023, HUD issued final regulations implementing HAPMA, including the over-income requirements. Demolition disposition activities: NYCHA is requesting HUD approval for demolition disposition activities at the following developments: Fulton, Elliott, Chelsea &amp; Chelsea Edition, and PSS Grandparent Family Apartments. Permanent affordability commitment together pact: NYCHA is requesting HUD approval to convert Hernandez Melzer Tower, Seward Park Extension, and Bayview through the Rental Assistance Demonstration, RAD, program. Through this action, all units in the developments will be operated outside the federal public housing program. Households will be transitioned to project-based Section 8 assistance. The executive summaries, draft plan, and draft significant amendment are available in English, Spanish, Chinese, and Russian on NYCHA's website and also at the sign-in table. As part of the annual plan and significant amendment process, NYCHA met with members of the Resident Advisory Board, RAB, and Citywide Council of Presidents, CECOP, eight times between March and June of this year. The draft fiscal year 2024 annual plan and the draft significant amendment were also shared with all Resident Advisory Board, RAB delegates, and to the Resident Association presidents. I would like to thank the ten members of the Citywide Council of Presidents and their RAB delegates, representing each of the CECOP's ten districts and including one Section 8 resident. We encourage residents and the public to provide written comments on the draft fiscal year 2024 annual plan and the draft fiscal year 2023 significant amendment. You can provide comments via email, fax, regular mail, or hear at the public hearing this evening. The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain the views, comments, and recommendations of the public on the draft fiscal year 2024 annual plan and the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2023 annual plan. The draft plans and draft amendment are not final and will be modified before they are submitted to HUD. Please understand, however, that this evening is not intended as a forum for verbal exchange. NYCHA representatives will not engage in discussions with the speakers, nor will they respond to questions. They are present to hear your comments about the draft plan and draft significant amendment. Distributing materials is not allowed in the auditorium. If you have leaflets or brochures you would like to share, please leave them at the resource table in the lobby. Resource tables offering information on programs and opportunities that may be of interest to you are also set up in the lobby. At this time, I would like to introduce our NYCHA board members. Lisa Bova Hyatt, CEO. Jamie Rubin, Chair. Victor A. Gonzalez, Vice Chair. Greg Bellinfanti, Member. James McCoy, Member. Raymond Miller, Member. Sheena Wright, Member. We are also joined by our Chief Operating Officer, Eva Trimble, and Peter Andrea, Inspector from the NYPD. We will now hear briefly from our Chair, Jamie Rubin.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Adams for the opportunity to serve as Chair of the NYCHA Board, and thank you to my fellow board members for welcoming me and my, our my fellow new board member Greg Bellinfanti to the board. We look forward to the opportunity to serve.
We will now hear brief remarks from our CEO, Lisa Bova Hyatt.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being here tonight, and thank you so much to our fellow board members and Eva Trimble, our Chief Operating Officer, for being here. When NYCHA staff and our residents work together, we make history. Under the call of Fund NYCHA Families, residents led two rallies in Albany to provide much-needed rental assistance to NYCHA families affected by the pandemic. For those of you who were there, it was absolutely inspiring. It really, really was. In response, the New York State Legislature has committed to over $165 million in funding to cover existing rental arrears, reducing the burden on NYCHA families. We recognize that no one knows NYCHA better than its residents. So NYCHA has committed to including resident voices in our agency's key initiatives. Resident leaders and staff are learning side by side about our mutual obligations under 964. NYCHA residents are at the forefront of our sustainability projects, and NYCHA residents' working groups have led conversations around our ongoing work order reform initiative. We hope to continue this momentum with a renewed commitment to customer service and resident partnership. Thank you. Due to decades of disrepair and chronic underfunding, NYCHA must be creative in how we secure funding for our developments. Because NYCHA is so vast, we can pursue multiple strategies at the same time, securing every possible opportunity to improve conditions for our residents. The Public Housing Preservation Trust, a sister agency signed into law last year by Governor Hochul, will use renovated properties while NYCHA continues to manage these sites. This summer, we will kick off our first resident vote. Under the trust, residents will decide how renovations will occur at their development. Our main tool for renovation is PACT, which has already repaired thousands of units. The PACT program is expected to fund renovations at almost a third of NYCHA's portfolio, bringing a more stable eight subsidy to our residents. Meanwhile, our partners in New York City government have secured funding for comprehensive modernization projects at four sites. The $2 billion invested will allow for major renovations at our Gowanus, Wycoff, St. Nicholas, and Toad Hill developments. With all these strategies, NYCHA is expected to renovate more than half of our developments and continues to advocate for more funding to improve conditions across our portfolio. Improving the lives of our residents means improving the way NYCHA delivers on expectations set by the 2019 HUD agreement. The HUD agreement defines pillar areas where we have since made considerable progress. We continue to test thousands of units for the presence of lead-based paint at the new .5 standard and work to abate those that test positive as quickly as possible. NYCHA is addressing mold in our buildings through initiatives like the ventilation program, where staff have replaced 8,400 roof fans and cleaned about 70,000 vents. From 2021 to 22, NYCHA has reduced verified mold complaints by 34%, and this year, we aim to reduce these by another 20%. Similarly, we have reduced verified pest complaints by 15% from 21 to 22 and are on track to reduce these by another 14% in the upcoming year. Making sure our residents stay warm during the heating season continues to be a top priority for NYCHA. In the 2022-23 heating season, we've reduced heating outages by 23% from last year. In 2022, NYCHA completed 80 boiler replacements and continues to replace these critical pieces of infrastructure. 200 boiler replacements are currently in the construction phase. Finally, NYCHA is prioritizing consistent and reliable elevator service, which is especially important to our senior residents. We have over 240 elevator replacements currently under construction and are working to reduce the outage duration across our portfolio. In tandem with these many projects aimed to improve the conditions at our developments, NYCHA is also focusing on how we can improve communication with our residents. We are committed to better communication and better customer service. The resident case management system is the biggest project in NYCHA's history and will streamline our software so our staff and especially our residents can get the services they need from NYCHA. Additionally, NYCHA is improving communication around work orders, which residents have communicated is a top priority. Now, when a resident calls the CCC to schedule a repair, they receive an email confirmation with the order and appointment details. We hope that these changes increase transparency and accountability and bridge the relationship between NYCHA and our residents. I look forward to hearing from all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. We hope that many of you will have an opportunity to share your comments about the draft fiscal year 2024 annual plan and the draft significant amendment to the fiscal year 2023 annual plan. Now I will review the commentary process to ensure this event runs smoothly. Attendees who submitted a request to speak in person today will be called on to speak in order of submission, alternating between in-person and virtual attendees on Zoom. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. You will see a countdown clock here in the theater and on the screen via Zoom. Please keep an eye on the clock at the center of the stage so that you will know when your time limit is approaching. We expect a high volume of speakers and want to make sure that everyone has a chance to share their comments, so please adhere to the time limit. If you have additional comments or if you have an issue that concerns only you or your apartment, you can fill out a resident comment card available at the sign-in tables in the lobby, which will be collected by NYCHA staff. You may type your name, development, address, apartment number, contact information, and comment in the Zoom Q&amp;A box, or submit written comments via email to annualplancomments@nycha.nyc.gov. Staff from our operations and property management departments are joining us this evening and will be reviewing comments as received. If you are here in person and wish to speak, you may fill out a speaker slip, which is available at the check-in tables. If you are joining via Zoom or by phone, use the raised hand function in Zoom or press *9 on your phone to request to speak. The order of speakers will be: individuals who submitted a speaker slip in person here today, individuals with their hands raised on Zoom. For those on Zoom when called on to speak, please ensure your microphone is not muted. If you are dialing in by phone, we will call the last four digits of your phone number, and you will need to press *6 to unmute yourself. If you are not responsive or no longer wish to speak when your name or phone number is called, I will move on to the next speaker. Please remember that we are here to hear comments on the draft plan and the draft significant amendment. Demeaning, vulgar, or discriminatory language, as well as personal attacks, personal comments or attacks on resident representatives, public attendees, or NYCHA staff will not be tolerated. We reserve the right to immediately move to the next speaker in line if your comments are deemed as inappropriate. Please be considerate of your neighbors and follow these instructions. Let us begin with comments from attendees who submitted a request to speak. Let us begin with comments from attendees who submitted a request to speak. When I call on you, please state your name and your development or affiliation, then share your comment. For our attendees here in the theater, please speak from the microphones at the front or back of the auditorium. If you need assistance, please raise your hands and someone will come to you with a microphone. For our Zoom attendees, when called, please unmute yourself and begin speaking. When you are finished speaking and your time is up, please mute yourself so that other speakers can be heard. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak, and to ensure that we hear from everyone, we will strictly enforce the time allotted. We encourage residents and the public to provide written comments on the draft annual plan and the draft significant amendment. Comments may be submitted through July 15, 2023. We will now call upon the first two speakers that are here in person. May I have first Rose Hammond and second Joanne Brown? Rose Hammond, you may proceed.
It's actually Rose Hamid. Okay? I won't get too close to the mic because I got a big mouth. And I want to point out the fact that everything that's in this plan, it's, for me, it's just an Orwellian type of plan from 1984. And choosing us to basically spy on each other so that this way you can get whatever it is that you want to get. I call for HUD to go through the process of investigating each and every one of you before you take one more step towards our homes. Because so far, for what you've done through PACT, they're just intruders in our home. They are third-party folks. They come to our doors, they pretend to act like they work for New York City Housing Authority, and then they, and then they attack. I was attacked, another person in my building was attacked, another person in the building died. Three days, they didn't notice her until there was a foul smell. And because that person that lives on the same floor reported the situation and works for housing, they ended up getting arrested for making such a big fuss. And then that apart, that person that was basically dead, they put a little padlock on it. And I don't know who told the local children, okay, teenagers, that our part, that apartment was empty, but they decided to have, not only did they have a party, but they stole everything from that dead woman's apartment. Okay? No, we're tired already. We want safety. We want public safety for all, not just for the pre-selected ones, not for the ones that are investing only. We want safety. Okay? And I'm not a resident. There's no M.D. coming after my name. I am a tenant, and I've been living at Seward Park Extension, okay, since '94. And I do not appreciate the fact that all of a sudden, all these strangers show up, intruders, and they matter more than I do. I'm sorry, I raised eight kids, five sons, three with autism. The police never came knocking on my door. I should get restitution for that. Okay? So you make sure that you keep us all safe from this day forward because you're going to be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, Joanne Brown.
Good evening, everybody. I have only just two questions. My concern is only, well, first of all, let me just let you know, I am the president of Warren Street Houses, and I sit on quite a few boards, the Community Board Six and also Gamal's Community Eight, they're there, and also sit on the Fifth Attorney Committee, DNC, I could keep going on and on and on. But anyway, my question to you all is those e-bikes. I know that on the news, I've been watching the news telling us that you're going to be implementing about those e-bikes, putting electrical stables outside, the outside to go, the parking lot, so I'm not sure if that's where you want to put them at. But you need to do something like now because there's too many of those e-bikes. I know that they use them to go to work, to go to school, or wherever, but then they also need to be responsible too because there's too many childrens and people are losing their lives for that one. Now, my next question, which you're not going to answer until later. Right now, we have over 3,800 private people that's living into the shelters. We should be taking care of our own before we could be reaching out to want to help somebody else right now. Because we got too many people that's working, they are going, they go to school, they also out here putting their kids inside their daycare centers so that they can maintain their apartments, or because they have been there for like seven years, three years, two years, or maybe longer than that. But like I said, my focus, I really, I really didn't want to speak, but I thought about those there, two main things are the e-bikes and the ones that's been living right here all along. They need your help. I understand about the other people, you know, our people that's coming in, whether from Florida and then everywhere else, but then no, you got to take care of home before you can take care of somebody else. Okay? That's what I'm working on right now. Because we got too many people, I got, I'm around a lot of seniors, they need food. So now if somebody out there that can help me to make sure that I can continue to keep giving them those seniors their food, I thank you. Okay? But reach out to me, I'm Joanne Brown from Warren Street Houses. Reach out to me and then let me know how else I can be able to help these other people too. But I want to take care of home first.
Thank you for your comment. We will ask the next two speakers in person. First, April Summers, second, Selena's Miranda.
Hi, I'm April Summers. My question is, or statement is, NYCHA's emotional support policy is in direct conflict with HUD's policy, which states only reason an accommodation request could be denied is granting the request would impose undue financial and administrative burden on the housing provider. The request would fundamentally alter the essential nature of the housing provider's operations, and the specific assistance animal in question would pose a direct threat to the health or safety of others despite any other reasonable accommodation that could eliminate or reduce the threat. The request would result in significant physical damage of others despite any reasonable accommodation that could eliminate or reduce the physical damage. Despite new requirement that NYCHA currently has for emotional support animals and service animals does not fall within these parameters and is in effect contrary to its meaning and guidelines. This lack of oversight will cause many legal and financial problems for NYCHA as tenants learn and exercise their legal rights with required support service animals. When will NYCHA's emotional support policy reflect current federal, state, and city policy and laws? Because people with disabilities deserve better. As I made a request for an accommodation, you denied me and are currently in process of terminating my lease. You can't do that. So I challenge you to come into the 21st century with your emotional support policy. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm Selena's Miranda, a tenant from the Chelsea Elliott Development. I do not want my home, my community destroyed and ruined. I'm against demolition. I'm also against privatization. I feel safe and secure under my Section 9 lease, public housing. Our buildings are well-constructed. The developers, Essens and related, are pushing the narrative that these buildings are deteriorating, but it's a gross exaggeration of the truth. Yes, we could use some repairs and better maintenance, but destroying the buildings is a solution that only benefits the developers. The main developer involved, related, already have seven buildings and six luxury condominiums. That's 13 buildings in the Chelsea area alone. This is all about greed. They want more. They want our NYCHA buildings demolished to grab every inch of space they can get their hands on in Chelsea. We are vulnerable. We are a vulnerable population, and we are being targeted. Steven Ross, you should be ashamed. The greed and the desperation is obvious and embarrassing. You are supposed to uphold an image of classiness, prestigious-ness, and elegance, but with the invasion and takeover of our close-knit, family-oriented community, all I see is a tactless, unsophisticated, and gluttonous monster. Just do what is right and withdraw from this project. It was and is a bad idea. If you follow through with this, I promise you, you will not get the results that you intended. Do not let the greed blind you. It's time to start building for yourself treasures in heaven.
Thank you for your comment. We will now hear from our first, fourth speakers on Zoom in the order as follows. Phone number 1922 and Dana Eldon are the first two. Phone number ending in 1922 on Zoom, you may unmute.
Hi, my name is Willie Mae Lewis, and I'm the vice president of St. Nicholas Houses. My comments about car mods, we are part of that along with Toad Hill. However, they keep pushing it back. I don't know how much longer we will be able to do this with the pushback because as far as the heating, we were supposed to have those installed at least three years ago. The plumbing here is ridiculous, and they keep pushing it back. Now they're talking about 2025. Y'all came in here in 2023 with all of this stuff, we're going to do this, we're going to do the kitchens, we're going to do the bathrooms, we're going to do all of the pipes, and plus, we have to move out our apartment. I understand that because of their vessels, because these buildings was built in the 50s. I've been in this one apartment for 55 years this month, okay? And I like living where I'm living, I love Harlem. But the thing is, you all need to push instead of pushing back on this because I don't know how much longer we're going to be able to face these things. You're doing tax work and everything, but that's not it. Plus, we have a rat infestation, and I've called and I've tried to make some progress with that. And right now, we're in a limbo with these particular repairs. The plumbing, I don't know if we can make it to 2025, okay? Because these parts, these buildings are 70-plus years old. So how much longer are you going to keep pushing back? You've already started in Toad Hill, so what's the problem? We started in St. Nicholas. We have 14 buildings here, and they all need to be redone over, especially with the plumbing and with the heating. So my question is, when are you going to stop pushing back and stop putting these band-aids? Oh, y'all come in here, you do not, you all per se that's sitting on the podium, but the ones that come in here, you know, and they're putting band-aids on stuff and people, I'll give you a good example. We have one tenant in here, she's having problem with her doors. During the wintertime with the wind and stuff was blowing, and plus, don't forget our windows. And y'all say, y'all don't even have any money for the windows. You know how old these windows are, 30 years plus? I mean, how, how much do y'all think that we can bear? You know, and you want, I know a lot of people with the pandemic got behind in their rent and stuff, but y'all still, you know, getting paid a salary. So I would like to know, when are you going to stop pushing back and start pushing forward and doing the things that really need to be done and we really need a lot of work done here in St. Nicholas? I also sat on the board with Victor, and he knows that I speak the truth, and right now, it feels like you're just being ignored. So please, I'm asking you all to please push this thing up instead of backwards. We need to get started. You claim in 2023 you was going to do all this, and then we don't even have a community center for our youth because of the water down there, because of the plumbing. So you need to get started in here, sooner rather than later.
Thank you for your comment. Next on Zoom, we have Dana Eldon, followed by Donna Jackson.
Good evening. Yes, good evening. My name is Dana Eldon. I'm the president of St. Irish Park Houses Resident Council and director of the nonprofit under the same name. I'm here to share my concerns regarding the demolition of these two developments, Chelsea and Fulton, as well as the misinformation and the Cinderella-type cast of this project, as well as the many projects of this kind that have taken over half of the NYCHA portfolio. There are so many questions that have not been asked and surely not answered when attempting to bamboozle the residents of public housing. And let's not forget the original blueprint, which was constructed without the participation of the residents of NYCHA. The 964 rules and regulations under HUD that promote inclusion when making any major changes to the structure of NYCHA, which would affect thousands of residents. Do they know that once they have decided to accept Section 8 conversion, that under Section 8, their homes can be denounced, demolished under Section 18? Do they realize that Section 8 project-based approval processes are completed by a minimum of tenant-resident participation? Why is it that a higher percentage of voting in these processes is not granted? Why? Because they want to pour the wool over your eyes before you are informed about ulterior motives. The rich get richer while the poor get homeless. This is what we are seeing here. This is all about the money that can be made at the cost of the poor, citywide, who can lose their homes. Shamefully, once these displaced residents see the completion of their new buildings, some will have passed away of old age, and others will wind up stuck in their temporary homes for good. So watch the temporary lease agreement, folks. All these new features are going to be costly. Have you asked if meters are going to be put into your homes, thereby adding to your monthly rent, the cost of electrical services? And for those who are paying higher rents now, to be priced out of their homes? The fact that we all have so many vacancies shows that perhaps your plan included these vacancies to accommodate the relocations of thousands. When it all boils down to this, the process has caused anxiety for many. The negligence of NYCHA has also caused the deaths of many, especially during the pandemic, when NYCHA did nothing to protect the living of its residents. Anyway, I promise all the residents of my development that I will never give in to the plan of privatization, RAD PAC, or Section 8 conversions. I will never forfeit their rights, as I have seen and done these past years since the arrival of Greg Russ and then Dan Sharad. My promise to you, NYCHA, while watching this rampant attempt to privatization across the nation, is to always keep the safety, wellness, and rights to representation to and for the residents I represent. Some say to leave it to God and leave it in His hands. I say it's...
Thank you for your comment. We have two more speakers on Zoom. First, Donna Jackson, followed by phone number 0848. Donna Jackson- Donna Jackson, please proceed with your comment.
Hello? Can you hear? Hello?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay. Um, good evening. I'm stuck in the lobby. And I've been stuck in the lobby for three hours already. I am disabled. You have another handicapped sitting in the corner in front of the building. You have another senior citizen, two senior citizens, and this is on a rampant basis. Now, what I don't understand is, I understand that you want to destroy, rebuild or whatever you want to call it. But you're not putting consideration for your tenants, your residents. You say you are, but you're not. Because if you were accommodating your residents, I wouldn't be sitting here disabled, hungry and can't get up seventeen flights with the walker. Or the handicapped lives on my floor. He just came from school. He needs to be home having his meal and room for preparing for the next day. I say that to say, now I'm sitting here outside in front of the lobby. And guess what? Guess who's coming to visit me? And there's no food here. But the rats are starting to come out now because it's evening time. And he keep peeking at me and he keep crossing over. Soon, old lady, he's gonna come this way. So I say this to say, you're scaffolding. Why these Mitchell houses? Why you have scaffolds? Trust me, I'm up on the high floors. I can see the work that those people are doing on the roofs, which is really nothing. Why, NITRA? And you sit there and say, oh, you don't have money for this and you don't have money for that. But you were granted some money. You were granted funding for this. You were granted funding for that. And I'm just saying, it is a poor how you want to per se raise your rent, move us out, move your new Americans in. And I'm gonna say it right, because this is what's happening. But no, you're not considering what happened to, what happens to your residents. They've been here all they like. I could keep going on and on, but I'm gonna stop because I'm gonna let somebody else speak. But y'all gotta do something because I should not be sitting here for three hours waiting on an elevator. Because you want to fix five elevators in one development at a time. Come on. You should have did one building at a time, get both elevators running in within a week or two, and then suffice to move on to the next building. Just like you knocking down builders, you need to knock them all down. And you need to accommodate every New York City resident that been born and raised here before you start moving in shelter with their nasty stuff. You need to screen them because they the ones make
Thank you for your comment. We do have property management and operations present and online. Please ensure that we have your information for follow-up. Our last Zoom person before we resume in-person speakers is phone number zero eight four eight. You may unmute.
How you doing? How's everything? Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Nigel Dupree. I'm the President of Brook Ellen Housing. It is something I just want to bring an attention to. I think the most thing that's plaguing NITRA residents is mental health. The things that we see every day in our neighborhood as far as murders, drugs, crimes, assaults, homeless people. Um, I think to the point where we become numb to the, we become numb to the trauma that we deal with every day. Um, this is a big issue that I feel like every community is dealing with. And I think that NITRA and politicians understand that what we are facing every day and with the money NITRA makes, I'm always wondering, why don't residents of NITRA have free access to a therapy and a psychologist that we can have on site? I think if you want to change the mind state of New York City residents, we need mental health. We deal with a lot of drama every day in our community. And this is for every NITRA community. There should be free access to a therapist or psychologist moving forward. Because dealing with NITRA residents, you know what we deal with every day. You know the position we are in, staying on top of people. Murder is not a common thing that we get used to in a NITRA residence. A lot of people in the world doesn't even know a person who have got murdered before. So I think NITRA should invest more into mental health and start investing in young youth. And I remember the times where the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, they took all that money away from us and haven't gave the youth nothing yet. So we're talking about subway surfing. We're talking about these crimes. But we're not investing in these youth. So that's all I just wanted to say. Let's invest in these youth. Let's invest in NITRA. Let's invest in our community. And thank you. I yield.
Thank you for your comment. We will now hear from two in-person speakers. First, Councilmember Gail Brewer, followed by Lucy Newman.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I am Gail Brewer. I'm a City Council member for District Six, the Upper West Side, part of Clinton, Central Park and many, many wonderful developments. There are many areas of concern in this draft annual plan. I'm just gonna mention a few of them. Number one, the City Council did put money in to fix and repair the vacancies. But for goodness sake, in one development, I have forty vacancies as we sit here today. We've got to find a way to fix them, repair them. It takes too long to verify public housing eligibility and process applications. NITRA applicants already qualify for programs like low-income tax credits, WIC, SSI. NITRA should rely on the screening conducted to participate in these programs to prevent time-consuming and duplicate work on the part of both applicants and aging employees. Bottom line, fix the apartment, get people in quickly. Number two, currently, NITRA redetermines rent whenever household income changes. Instead, NITRA should redetermine rent only when household income increases by ten percent or more. This is what's done under Section Eight. Number three, I would like to see Harborview, which is on Fifty-Fifth Street. We were promised a hundred percent affordable housing, really affordable, on the parking lot. We have not seen one unit so far. Number three, privatization. I'll try to be supportive, but PAC and RAD on so many levels do not work. I have trouble, I have trouble with the management companies. I have trouble with the keys that don't work and the list goes on. I also want to mention, I put money in to keep the centers open on weekends and evenings. And I'd like to see every single community center and every single development open on weekends and evenings. I put in a hundred thousand dollars to do that. They should be open. And finally, this is not a big issue, but it is to me, the new income limit requirements are very, very challenging. I know they're HUD and I know that they're based on the area median income that is part of the HUD. But under the guidelines, people will lose, in my area, fourteen households, two hundred and ninety households citywide. They will experience hikes, but there's not enough information. Public information needed. And one over-income resident in my district wants to transfer the lease to his daughter who is eligible. Succession rights exist. That kind of information should be available so that people stay. These families are needed in NITRA. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next, Lucy Newman.
Can you hear me? Uh, it's very obviously tricky to go after Gail anytime you speak after her. But I'm hoping I can take a couple of seconds from Willie Mae's testimony time. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify in person. We have submitted written testimony. This is Lucy Newman from the Legal Aid Society. We also have copies of our submitted testimony in case anyone would like to review them. The Legal Aid Society, together with our colleagues and friends at the Community Service Society, demand that NITRA withdraw the draft significant amendment to its fiscal year 2023 plan in which it seeks approval from HUD for the demolition of the entirety of the public housing units that are known as Fulton, Elliott, Chelsea and Chelsea Edition, which is a senior-only building. Um, our written testimony discusses the history of the Chelsea Working Group and its genesis, which resulted from community opposition to a plan that NITRA released that recommended partial demolition at the combined geographical sites of these developments. We met for fifteen months with a huge group of individuals elected, NITRA Hudson Guild leadership, NITRA leadership, city leadership, housing policy and finance experts. And we met weekly to thoughtfully address the needs of residents and their homes at FEC. As you probably know, there was a report that was issued with recommendations that included feedback from residents, as well as publicized and well-attended meetings, in a pandemic, no less, documented diligently in our report and throughout the recommendations. At the forefront of that report were repeated concerns by residents about displacement, demolition and minimizing market rate units in any infill. Many residents were part of the team that chose the development team that got picked. Uh, it was Essent and Related, they won the bid. Um, allegedly, according to NITRA's press release in December two thousand and twenty-one, their bid was the, in quotes, "most responsive to the values, principles and recommendations of the working group." A year later, according to Essent and Related, the alleged PNA, physical needs, at the site jumped threefold from three hundred and sixty-six million to one point five billion, a number that has not been independently analyzed or verified. And now, according to a June two thousand and twenty-three New York Times article, a new plan has allegedly been hatched between some residents and Related and Essent that calls for all demolition of every single unit at those sites, including starting with a unit that houses solely seniors, calls for the displacement and relocate
Thank you for your comment. We will hear from the next two speakers in person. Karen Blondell, followed by Genesis Martinez.
So, good evening. First of all, I want you to know, I'm not here to take sides. I'm here to take over. Get that first, because I don't want to hear all of the peanut gallery stuff. Because I literally had to sit and read this over the last few days. Residents, you have to read. You have to read. Stop asking people to interpret for you. Interpret for yourself. Read. These plans come out every year. Every single year. I'm here to talk about HACMA. One second as I open up my little app. It's stressful. I ain't gonna lie to you. So my name is Karen Blondell. I'm the Red Hook West Resident Association President. I am also a part of the Preservation Trust Board. I'm on that board because I'm a resident and I'm not gonna let nobody else tell me what's going on. I'm in there with my own eyes, my own mind and my own heart and my own prayers. Um, HACMA. This over putting people out because they make a certain amount of income. New York City is a super city. If you make a hundred thousand dollars, you still broke. You are broke. I don't understand how HUD did this rule in twenty eighteen. A pandemic happened in twenty nineteen, threw the whole world into a shift. Then after that, we had asylum seekers come to further burden housing in New York City. And then after that, we had the fires. And then after that, we have heat. Where are the descendants of the slaves and Indians supposed to go? That's who I'm talking for today. I'm talking about me, my family that's been here for hundreds of years, living in teepees, plantations. Public housing is not a plantation. We need to wake up and stop acting like we need permission from NASA all the time. And we need to stay on agenda when we come to these meetings. Every time I come here, I'm getting disappointed. Because as a resident leader, you have to take the time to educate yourself before you go running around with the hallelujah, thank you, Jesus, emotional trip that you keep putting these residents on. All we gotta do is read this. It is not right. HUD should be required to do a moratorium on HACMA. There's no way they should be raising, they should be ashamed of theirself. This is like whack-a-mole. We just got the city and the state to help us out. And now here go HUD with some new crazy rule. We need the city, the state and the federal government.
Thank you for your comment, Genesis Martinez. Do we have Genesis Martinez in person? Okay, so we will move forward to our Zoom speakers. Again, we will hear for four people on Zoom. I'll call the first two, Star Hernandez, followed by Loretta Humphrey.
Hi, hello. Um, so I am a resident of NITRA. And I've been a resident for NITRA for years now. And the thing is, my issue is the domestic violence transfers, okay? So let me tell you about this. What's being done about domestic violence transfers? Every day, NITRA has had my life in jeopardy. Every single day, they have failed to remove me away from my perpetrator when I was approved back in December twenty-two. Funds are being put elsewhere and it is endangering too many tenants who have human rights. I have spoken to other tenants who are in the same situation, some for two, two and a half years. Mind you, VAWA was created to avoid this disaster. And even with the light shed on our situation via news, hence the woman back in February who got stabbed while she was pregnant upon waiting for NITRA to move her from her domestic violence situation. With such lack taken into consideration by NITRA and us in domestic violence situation, we are not spoken for, nor even looked at. This is neglect in policy. This was an email I received from T.A. LaGuardia President. After eight months of me asking around and being shuffled around NITRA employees, this is what she had to say to me. Ms. Hernandez, would you like to know why you aren't being helped? Because I don't want to frustrate you or cause any additional trauma because you say the answers are being given to you cause emotional stress. I don't believe you care to hear about process, waiting or a lack of funding that severely impacts the lives of tenants living in NITRA. I believe you care nothing at all about these things because, quote, "your health and safety," quote, "is in jeopardy." I'm not gonna tell you about the thousands waiting for transfers who have been on that waiting list for years and have seen and heard nothing regardless um, regarding the transfers that have been approved. And I'm not gonna tell you about the people hospitalized, maimed and bruised because an emergency transfer did not come through enough, she says. She continues, "I will tell you this. If your life is in jeopardy and you are not at risk of being severely, and you are at risk of being severely hurt or even killed, then you owe it to yourself to remove yourself from that place of harm. Whatever sacrifice you have to make, whatever it may cost you, it is worth preserving your life and safety. And if you believe that I've put you in the same circle you've been running in the past eight months, please, Ms. Hernandez, break free of the circle. Find you somebody, find somebody able to move you with the swiftness you require. All the best to you."
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Hernandez. We do have your information and we'll be following up. Loretta Humphrey on Zoom, you may unmute.
Yes, greetings, greetings. My name is Loretta Humphrey. I am the founder and president of the Greater Triangle Civic Association. And I also am a NITRA resident. am a NITRA resident, but my situation is different. I live in a FHA home that is managed by the New York City Housing Authority. All of these plans that are being made do not take the FHA residents into consideration. This new rent plan of over income and managing that by raising $100,000 and over is disingenuine to the FHA residents. They are never at the table when these plans are made. Now, I know that the controller did an audit, I know that there is a team, and I've been giving information to these people, and it looks like they are using a lot of this information against us. And that's why it's very important, I'm saying this to the audience, you be very careful what you say in these meetings, because they get your ideas and they use it against you. But the FHA residents, they need a seat at that table. That over income rent stipulation is disingenuine to the FHA residents. And I would also challenge HUD to add the FHA residents into the conversation. I've been asking for 10 years, we are finally pulling an association together, thank God, but every time there is a meeting, the FHA residents whose houses are managed by the New York City Housing Authority are out of the conversation. They don't want a land trust, they don't want community trusts, they want a transfer of title. That would save HUD and the New York City Housing Authority a whole lot of money if they would just transfer the title and give these people their homes, because there's five generations living in these homes, and that promise was given to us in the Declaration of Trust. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Humphrey, and we are reaching out to you on Zoom to please provide us with your address. We'll have our next two people on Zoom, Jovani Knox, followed by Danan Spivey. It seems... We'll move forward with Danan Spivey.
Hello? I'm Danan Spivey, and I live in Mitchell Projects. Now, you guys are coming along with this new project or this new develop for the people if they want their apartments to be demolished and brand new, and then the rent goes sky high. What happens to the people that are not inclined with this, "We don't want it." What if we don't want it? What happens to us? We've been living there for decades. Watch this place crumble. This place is diminishing as we speak. There's water damage, asbestos, rats, elevators never work, the hardware is always closed. We have water in the walls where you go in your house, and there's this stench, a bad stench, where you can't even breathe in your own home. And you want to bring in this plan to demolish our home because y'all want to do that. What about the people that were living there for years? Y'all have money. Y'all have money. And to me, it seems like I'm going to piggyback off the other young lady. Y'all being greedy, and it's just not fair for those who have been living there for decades. When I came to this project, somebody told me, "Oh, this project, you get everything first when something is wrong." Da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da-da. It's like we beg when we call that customer service number to get something done. And that shouldn't be, because guess what? Y'all collect your rent every single month, whether it's $10, $200, $1,000, $5,000. You get your rent, so we should get what we asked for. And if we don't allow this plan to go through, you mean to tell me I still have to come into the building of Mitchell, watch this bucket, I have to walk around because of the piss that's coming through the ceilings? That's somebody's toilet going straight up. It's deteriorating, flies, disgusting, running from rats, garbage overflowing, elevators don't hardly ever work. And we have to go upstairs and make a call and say, "Okay, elevator car B is out," because then they want to know what floor, is the alarm ringing? We're doing your job. How about y'all do something for us? The asylum seekers is coming in here, y'all moving them in, and y'all want to move us out. I don't think it's fair. And we pay rent just like everybody else. Stop being greedy. Y'all got your money. Do what y'all need to do for us and not for yourselves. People, we depend on housing, that's why we're here. And you want to take that away from us. Y'all trying to make it non-affordable so that we can go. Where are we going to go? Y'all treat the asylum seekers better than the people that have been living here. And that's all I have to say. Mitchell Projects, go see Mitchell Projects right now as I speak, and I will give you the information to the building that rains down piss every...
Thank you for your comment. We will have one more speaker on Zoom, Councilmember Brooks Powers. Do we have Councilmember Brooks Powers?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, please proceed.
Thank you. So, again, I'm Solvina Brooks Powers. I'm the council member representing the 31st District, covering parts of southeast Queens and the eastern end of the Rockaway Peninsula. My district includes the Redfern Beach, 41st Street, Carlton Manor, Hamels, and Oceanside Developments, as well as a Rad Development, which is Ocean Bay. I will always stand with the NITRA tenants in my community. My interest is always to ensure that our NITRA residents have what they need, not to just survive, but to thrive. That means infrastructure that works, access to high-quality services and resources, and rapid response to residents' concerns. I've heard concerns from my residents about Rad PAC conversion and its impacts on tenants. What matters most to me is that the will of the tenants be respected. The tenants must have self-determination, and it is crucial that NITRA make every effort to respect the interests of our residents. I recently visited Washington, DC, and met with the HUD Secretary, Marcia Fudge, and the Regional Administrator, Alika Ampri Samuel. I shared what I've been hearing on the ground from my NITRA residents, and I believe we all can agree that the current condition of NITRA's buildings are unacceptable. We can and must do better by our NITRA residents. They deserve ironclad protections and state-of-the-art infrastructure. I look forward to working alongside my council colleagues to hold NITRA accountable to its tenants. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember, for your comment. We will move to in-person now. I'll call the first two speakers, Valerie Petty, followed by Annette Tomlin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Annette Tomlin, and I am a resident from Brookdale and Houses in Canarsie. It shames me. It really does shame me, because I am tired of seeing scapegoats to represent us, in and out, every other year, two years, people coming and going and representing what they consider NITRA or either HUD. HUD should be responsible because of the negligence and mismanagement over the years. This is the reason why we're in this situation that we are in now. And when you say that you're only receiving 67% of the rent, have you ever actually wondered why? Because of the repairs that have failed to be done, the cosmetic jobs that you're doing now that are with this Rad PAC and preservation, it's ridiculous. Have you ever seen the success stories, even when you had the thing from Chicago? Where are those tenants at now when they demolish those, okay? So, again, what are we talking about here? You want to know why people have wanted to stay in NITRA for so long? Because it's not just their homes, it became their community as well. So, you're not just taking away people's homes, and while we actually have built a community, where are we going? You have 400,000 other people that are just like wondering where they're going to go. You have a crisis with homelessness. The mayor has not done enough, Kathy Hochul has not done enough, and neither are you. And I'm not saying you particularly, because most of y'all look like you just got here, but the ones prior to, but what are y'all going to do while you're sitting here? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Annette Tomlin. Do we have Annette Tomlin? Oh, sorry. Thank you. Valerie Petty? Do we have Valerie Petty? Okay, I'll call the next two in-person. We have Lisa Kenner, followed by Louise Williams.
Good, good evening. My name is Lisa Kenner. I am the R.A. President of Van Dyke Houses. I also bought a group of residents, not just from Van Dyke, I have Howard, Langston Hughes, and who else? And Glenwood, see? And it's not about just Van Dyke, that just shows we are a community. It's not just one development. When one hurt, everybody hurt. So, they are here because I want them to know what happens here. A lot of people don't come, and they always complaining, and I did tell them, "You got a complaint? Come here." Because when they go to the management, they don't get nothing done, but I know if they come here, they're going to get something done. Somebody going to listen. But one thing I have to say is about, there's a lot of things I have to say, but the main thing is the pets. You know, you got dogs over 25 pounds. Last week, I was walking, trying to take my laundry, and three dogs coming up without no chain on. And when you telling somebody in management, it goes to one ear, dude, out the other. And that's why a lot of residents don't want to come and talk to the manager, because they're not doing nothing. I probably do more than some of them do. You know, see? And it's not about pay, this is our home, and you trying to be safe, but you got dogs in there that's over 25 pounds. You got some dogs got their own room. I know there's a lot of things going on, and some of my colleagues had talked, touched on of it, but I'm going to tell you, don't come there with no pack, no rag, and all that other stuff at Van Dyke, because I will be fighting, and I got a bunch of other people be fighting too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kenner. Next, Louise Williams.
Okay, my name is Louise Williams, and I'm from 429 Dumont Avenue, Van Dyke, of course. And I have so many people is coming over my head, and when I get out of church, I cannot get no rest. Something need to be done about that, because people is coming from all over in my building, and they need to go. They really need to go. So, I don't have much to say, because this is my first time here, but I need someone to help me with that, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. We will turn to Zoom now, and our first two speakers on Zoom is phone number ending in 2320, followed by Crystal Glover. Do we have phone number 2320 on Zoom? Crystal Glover, you may unmute and provide your comment.
Thank you very much. Boy, I'm so happy to be able to get on. My name is Crystal Glover, and I'm in Washington Houses, former TA president. I know the value of a tenant association. Management used to take care of our buildings back in the '60s and the '70s. If you, you couldn't even walk on the grass. Once crack came, our laundry rooms went, because heroin was there before the crack. So, a lot of that stuff got unnoticed as well, but at least the properties were cleaned, et cetera, et cetera. You came outside as a child, went to the park. Okay, crack comes in, our laundry rooms are gone, management abandons us, and so, that's why we initiate being. Resident associations didn't know the power they had. I am a former tenant, and I'm a child of a mother who started the residence associations. And 99.9% of tennis associations are not operating in their bylaws. Resident Engagement, Blackwell, you got Yuka Basquez, all these people, they're there working with the presidents, but the tenants don't get the information, they're not, a lot of these tennis associations don't really know what's going on. We need to be suing NITRA as a collective body. These 264 developed New York City developments, we need to come together and sue housing for abandonment, neglect. I believe the mob was running our developments. We had no leadership. And how can you be a tenant association if you don't know how to operate? You got the power. When I was the president, I could go to my manager, Ms. Joseph, hi, Ms. Joseph, if you're listening, she would drop everything she was doing to give, to give me and take time with what I needed. We had infill here, the tennis association and myself got together, it was forfeited. It didn't happen. They had three sites, Bloomberg wanted to build on, we fought it, and we took $4,000 of our TPA funds, and infill did not come to Washington Houses. So, right now, with COVID happening, all this food giveaways and all this kind of thing here, we got to go back to what the 964 regulations are talking about. Tenant associations, if you need my help, walebutterfly@gmail.com. We have the power. The tennis association, we don't have to sit back and, "Oh, Lord, woe is me." We got the power. These people can't do it. We're citizens of these United States. We got the juice. We got to act like we have it. They can't do anything to us that we don't allow to happen, because we have the power. That was the purpose of forming resident associations. I got 25 seconds left. That's the purpose of having a resident association. There's nothing that goes on without us knowing about it, because, but because the politicians and the mafias and the politicians and the cops is in with the politics, our buildings are being taken over, and if you say anything, you don't know what's going to happen to you, but I'm speaking on it anyway. Have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comment. Our next two Zoom speakers are Marcella Paradise, followed by Teresa Scott. Marcella Paradise, you may unmute. We will move on to Teresa Scott, you may unmute.
Peace and blessings, everyone. My name is Teresa Scott, and I'm from Redfern Houses. I oppose this annual plan, and I say no to Rad PAC. I say no to demolition, and say no to disposition, and I say no to, to the trusts. None of these, none of these programs that you're trying to implement does not help us. It's against the law, first of all. You're implementing plans that you have not included us in. So, how can you create, how can you create systems and programs and new housing programs when you have not did what you're supposed to do with the first one? It is against the law what you doing, and some of us, some of us don't know, but a part of us, we cannot sue you, but we can work with the Congress, the congressmen, and we need the Congress and the council people to work with us to make sure that we stop NITRA, because what they doing is illegal. And we're sitting up here alone, like that young, that young lady said. Another thing that I saw in the plan is that there is no accountability to NITRA. Like, y'all saying, y'all saying you don't have money, but NITRA is getting money all the time, and no one is making NITRA accountable to all this funding. They're being overfunded. They're being overfunded. And where's the money going? There's, there's no accountability. Then I saw an annual plan where you want to make it a senior only. Let me tell you something, that senior owner is dangerous. If I didn't have my young, my young bucks, my young teens, my young boys and girls helping me, I would be in danger. So we don't need all senior, we don't need no all senior housing. I'm 65, but I, I want a intergenerational because that's what's keeping me alive. Me being stuck here by myself, not having family, that's gonna put me in jeopardy. So I don't want an all senior program. Because what, what's supposed to happen with my neighbor's family if only seniors? Seniors cannot take care of seniors. We need young people. We need, we need teenagers, we need 35 years old. We do not want this plan. This plan is against our rights, it's against our health, it's against our mental health. We don't want this plan because it does not work for us. And you have not included us, and you have not made sure that we have the best that we can have. Our buildings are in good condition, some of them. But you don't have to destroy them. Take the money that you put in all these other programs and put it back in Safe Section 9. We want Safe Section 9. Save Section 9 and implement the 964 rules, which you are going against. So do your job and give us back our rights and give us back the stuff that belongs to us. Work by the 964 laws, not by these new rules that you are creating. We don't need no new social, no new social housing. Forget about that.
Thank you for your comment. We will turn to our speakers in person now. Rosaline Marie Hargrove, followed by Diane Johnson.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Rosaline Marie Hargrove, and I'm at Isaac Projects. I come in, I came in behalf of New York City Housing, NITIA. I'd like to draw a great plan concerning delinquent rent, overdue rent. I thought it'd be a good idea to have each of the households record their rent bill without paying money at the check cash in place. Then this way wouldn't be such a discipline for the rent attendant. He wouldn't have to file all those update records. Nevertheless, the old money will be paid by the federal government in my behalf. If not, in my behalf from asking New York City Housing to ask the government to pay the money if this plan is accepted. Thank you for the provided attention.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. My name is Ms. Johnson. I'm the RA TA president at Carter G. Woodson. I'm here to ask, I've been fighting for this, to speak with NITIA's legal team. If you know any of our history, we have four murders in our development for unauthorized persons walking and wandering in our buildings. It's still continuing. And now again, we're living in fear and being disrespected. It has to stop. If nothing changes, nothing changes. Everything can be revised. And I need to sit with the legal team and see what we could do to expedite these people out of our development. I have three developments, and one is under Van Dyke, two is also under Woodson. And all three buildings are seniors. If you come through my building, you would think it was a mixed building. We are being disrespected. We're living in fear again. And again, we had the murders. If you know our history, we have to expedite. The folders are downtown. So what's going on? Our housing assistance hands are tied. When they go up, I mean, it used to be you go up with an officer, you got 15 days to get out. If they go up now and lock a door, knowing that the rest, these people don't belong there, they lose their job. That's a conflict of interest to me. They are not tenants. How come we gotta go to landlord tenant court? They have no leases. They do more in our development than we do, and we pay our bills. We have to address that. We don't want another murder to go on. We don't want that. And then I just want to talk about NITIA with no money, saying they don't have money. And they sign these contracts with these people, three-year contracts. We froze to death last year and the year before with National Grid. Put our ABT, ABTs back in our buildings. We're getting heat by computers. And when it goes down, we gotta call, I'm telling 10, 12 people, the heat goes off nine or 10 o'clock at night, and don't come back on to six in the morning. Come on. We freeze, and we have frozen for two years messing with National Grid. It was a waste of money that NITIA claimed they don't have any? Stop doing that. Stop getting these companies in here signing contracts before you even give it a trial run. Find out what's going on and how the residents want to deal with that. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your comment. Our next two in-person speakers are Dushwana Nurse, followed by Dr. Jesse Fields.
Hello, hello. How y'all doing? My name is Dushwana Nurse, and I'm just here. You have to take pictures because I don't want to be an old, you know, bad enough. I'm here under a bad situation. So um, my name is Dushwana Nurse, and Lisa Kenner is our representative of Van Dyke. Um, I'm really cool. I'm here because my grandson got shot July 6th, 2022. My daughter do live in Tilden, which is across the street from Van Dyke. Um, he, he got shot in the park. And all we just asking for is an emergency transfer. And y'all can't even seem to do that to help her to get out with her five kids. She live in a building that the people think is funny just getting shot. They're making videos of this. My grandkids is good kids, okay? My grandsons, that the one that got shot can't even go to school because he can't even go back in that building because y'all can't even help my daughter get an emergency transfer. And that's all we simply asking is a transfer because she have three daughters that goes in that building. And he's saying enemies, that we are not really enemies because he got shot accidentally being in the park. Being in the park. He, he, he was born at Van Dyke. He comes to Van Dyke where I live at. Tilden is across the street, okay? He don't hang out in Tilden. These Tilden people coming to Van Dyke want to just shoot at innocent people because these was innocent people they shot at. My grandson got shot accidentally. My daughter, down to NITIA, down to the ASP, NITIA workers, the cops, they no good either. They ain't want to give her no report. I had to go to the councilwoman to get her report. Then she said, release the report. They gave a report, we gave it to y'all. Y'all ain't did nothing yet. And this is going on a whole nother year. My three granddaughters live with my daughter, but my two grandsons stay with me. Here they sitting here telling my granddaughter, oh, bitches get shot too. These are innocent girls. Now, something happened to my three grandkids, the ones that stay with my daughter? I'm watching them boys. They, they stopped going to school from September to January. January, they moved to my house. Now they go back to school. My daughter literally put them in the car to go to school, which is on Sutter Avenue, and I live on Black and Power. Just because y'all can't move fast enough to give her a transfer. Now, this is an emergency situation. My grandsons is not, you know, gang members. It was an accidentally thing. Now, my
Thank you, Ms. Nurse, for your comment. Please provide your contact information. Please provide your and your daughter's contact information to our staff in the front. Next, we have Dr. Jesse Fields. Dr. Jesse Fields, you may start your comment.
Good evening. Certainly, the residents, the tenants, the people who live in public housing in New York City must be responded to. My name is Dr. Jesse Fields. I'm a medical doctor in the Harlem community. And I know that there are ways we can do better as a community. We have to support each other. And obviously, NITIA is not doing what it should be doing. It's incredible, all of these issues that are coming up. They're incre, they're so hurtful. There's so much pain and suffering every day in so many developments. What's wrong? What, you have to ask, what are we doing wrong? It's pretty incredible. I'm an advocate and a supporter of the tenants, the residents of public housing in New York City. I work with the Committee for Independent Community Action, which was founded by Dr. Lenora Filani, whose spirit is here in this room and with our people. I want to address NITIA's draft amendment to the annual public housing authority plan for fiscal year 2023, which requests HUD's approval to convert developments, including Seward Park, Extension Bayview, and, and others, to the Rad PAC program. The request states, and I quote, "Through this action, all units in these developments will be operated outside, outside of the federal public housing program. Households will be transitioned to project-based Section 8 assistance." The residents of public housing, the tenants, had no voice in these plans. They don't want to be moved out of Section 9 federal public housing. The residents of public housing and those of these developments had no voice. The, the transfer out of federal public housing, Section 9 to Section 8 is a transfer in which residents lose federal protections on rent, succession rights, health and safety policies. Around the country, these programs, Rad PAC and the Trusts, have devastated, demolished public housing in this country. And you're trying to do the same thing in New York City. A Human Rights Watch report examined Rad PAC and found that Rad PAC programs negatively impacted the rights of housing, low-income housing residents. We are against the demolition of Fulton, Elliott, Chelsea developments and any other developments that come under demolition. And I'm here to say most emphatically that the residents, the tenants of public housing in New York City are saying.
Thank you, Dr. Fields, for your comments. We will move to Zoom. We have four people on Zoom. A reminder to please raise your hand on Zoom if you wish to speak. We have Isis Harris, followed by Carmen Quinones.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, we can hear you. Please proceed with your comment.
Hi, my name is Isis Harris. I'm a resident at Fulton Houses. My main concern currently is the, the HOPMA rules. And I've emailed and asked for some clarification on them, and I wasn't able to get any as of yet. I know that the, the rules are new, but I'm concerned about the implementation when no one can answer the questions. Are we gonna get any questions answered tonight? I'm not hearing.
Tonight is for your comments. Please proceed with your comments.
Well, my comments are, I'm concerned about people that, like myself, I'm a registered nurse. I worked during the pandemic. I got crisis pay. I worked 14, 16, 15-hour shifts. So my income did increase, and that carried on until 2021. I'm also concerned about the people that are nearing retirement and how this is gonna impact them. There are people that work, especially city workers, they work more hours right before retirement because their pension is, is larger if they do that. And there are other people that, like another commenter said, $100,000 in New York City is not a lot of money. So my concern, I really wanted some questions answered, and I'm not sure when that, that'll take place. But it is nerve-wracking. I'm also in a master's program. NITIA will not reduce my income based on my, me paying tuition, for whatever reason, because I'm the head of household, which also is unusual, is a strange way to do things. So those are my comments, and I'm hoping to get some answers sooner rather than later.
Thank you for your comments. We do have your contact information, and we'll follow up. Next, Ms. Quinones.
Good evening, everybody. First, I want to say my name is Carmen Quinones from Douglas Houses. I'm the president. Um, I wanted to piggyback off of what Ms. Dr. Fields was just talking about. She's absolutely right. You know, we keep going around in circles. This is horrible. None of the people agree with this plan. This, this, this whole thing, I've been reading this, and I've been like, I don't believe that this is happening. You know, you guys make up your own rules. You don't follow the 964s. Y'all just make things up every day. There's always somebody new that you gotta talk to, never the same person. The, the overturning of, of staff between, I mean, everywhere in NITIA is horrible. It's horrible. And for you to come and just tell people what you're gonna do with their homes after they have built it. They built it. It's disrespectful. To, and I want to, and I want to say very clear, very clear. You want to take people out of their homes. Hey, listen, I'm not against immigration. I'm an immigrant myself, listen. But the, the, the plan is to take other people and give other people their apartments. You know, we can't keep doing this. You have to take care of home. One thing, y'all can say what y'all want to say, but America is first and should be first all the time. We live here. We made this place. We sweat. My mother sweated, my grandmother sweated. And we are not for sale. Stop selling us out. People are really suffering and dying, and you're killing people softly. You have to check yourself before you wreck yourself. Because y'all ain't got it together, man. All these changes you're doing, y'all ain't even include nobody in it. Y'all got your own little gang of people that, that make decisions for us? This is not how it's supposed to be. It's not God's way. It's not God's way. Please, this whole, this whole, this whole thing is wrong. You need to really look at, get us together so that we, we can rewrite this whole thing. And I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Quinones, for your comment. Our next two speakers on Zoom are Shakina Butler, followed by Diane Blackwell. Shakina Butler, you may unmute and proceed with your comment. Diane Blackwell, you may unmute and proceed with your comment.
Good evening. My name is Diana Blackwell. I'm president of the Fritz Samuel Resident Association in Harlem. I'm here to support the conversation of, I'm sorry, the conversion of the Rad PAC program. Samuel City is in the process of being converted to this program. It has been a journey for me personally because I started off signing with the 21 developments, which did not work. And when the Rad PAC was presented, I joined in in 2015. It's not a perfect program, but any resident that wants to get involved is able to get involved. My support for this statement is that it was our residents that selected our developer. My support for this statement is that it was our residents that selected our developers, that is Genesis Lemoore with the BPH Management as our property management, and Goddard Riverside as our social service providers. These were choices made by resident leaders. Engagement with all parties has been ongoing, even without the closing of our developments. Again, it is not a perfect program, but it is workable. I believe that in conclusion, that we should have meetings, further future meetings with these that are already in the program, so that we can help improve and make accountable NYCHA and any developer and management company who are making decisions for our lives. We are all here to save our homes, whether it's Section 9 or Section 8. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Blackwell. Now, we will hear for four, from four speakers in person. The first two are Enrique Goldmundo, followed by Garland Roberts.
My name is Enrique Goldmundo. I'm from Frederick Samuel, City Samuel, West Harlem, New York. In the Public Housing Assessment Plan, the purpose was to determine the objectives for the operation of the programs and services the Department of Housing and Development, the public housing is supposed to provide to low-income families. So they had determined the main objectives, we just had discussed right now. Affordable housing, safe and clean. How we achieve it? Yes, this PAC program, if you go to developments, go to the PAC program, you will see, the first thing that you will see is a clean street. How they achieve it? How they did it? They did it to community leadership. That's how they achieve it. That's how they achieve a safe environment. Why is a priority? We need a safe environment, because New York City housing represent the human resource. So diligent care of these resources is what makes sense of governments. One important thing, the assessment invests in these leadership programs. Behind these leadership programs, we find women. Women, the assessment haven't really seen how women have been vital and building New York City. We have many samples of how the leadership of women achieve to have delivered the special liberty, Brooklyn Bridge, the Queen Bridge, and all these things that make New York great. We have it, not because the power that come from men, but from the leadership that come from women. And this assessment should address this leadership, especially in Harlem. Harlem give me a place where my life was possible, and this come from black women leadership. And you, please pay attention and believe in them, invest in them, invest in their programs. Garvey's Collection is a priority. If we get people together in forming an administrative plan for Garvey's Collection.
Thank you for your comment, Garland Roberts.
Unfortunately, I'm a person that usually is prepared, but they called me at the last minute, and I have not been back in New York for that many years. My name is Garland Roberts. I'm head of the Black Alumni Association of Brooklyn Tech, the old-school association that used to make the different parts for the New York City Housing Authority and the foundry at Brooklyn Technical High School. The majority of the early people that were in the housing developments, we were the ones that had at PS 258, the programs that trained structural engineers. And then, because of unions and others, somebody walked up on a tenement and shot the man in the head that was running the program. We have had many, many problems, myself as well, with developers, and the main thing is, as engineers and structural engineers, we saved many properties that people were trying to steal. But tenants and other people did not understand. I was with Ed Carter, we were the ones that were instrumental in many of the things that happened at Fort Greene, and also I have a vested interest because my cousin was raped in Fort Greene, committed suicide, and the actual young people of the project threw the two men that did it off the roof. I'm not for that type of thing, Belanchi-type of situations, but in my own situation, I was the one also that was involved when they had the Dracula landlord, they couldn't find nobody in the city, and I analyzed seven buildings, and that allowed them to win that case and put him in jail in his own project. But the main thing I came to talk about is, most of these people do not understand, you're being ripped off by investors and other people. People have understand that gold is no longer the only commodity, there's no more land, so they use you. You have Bear Stearns and all these other people, and not even all around the world that are taking over all of the underdeveloped areas of land to make different types of investment systems. You cannot afford to let them take your land. You cannot afford to let Section 9, as they call it, go away. I was with Adam Clayton Powell, I was at 221D and all the other things, but the main thing is, I wasn't here when this was happening. The tenants have to fight to stop this demolition and PEP houses and all these other people. And if you look into the, you can Google me, YouTube Stable Worth Saving, and you'll see what happens with me. I got 27 minutes, and it's so, anyway, the main thing is, you can Google YouTube Stable Worth Saving, because I'm the person that's been fighting Mark Stagg and the Albanian organized crime people that are part of this takeover. And unfortunately, the person that's now the head of HPD claims that he's the head of the Albanian mob.
Thank you for your comment. Our next two in-person speakers are Manuel Martinez, followed by Christina Chase.
I can blame that on NYCHA. No, I'm just joking. Good evening. Clock started, there you go. Good evening, happy to be here. Congratulations on Lisa Bova hired and you're securing the CEO position. Now, we have, the current condition that we have at NYCHA is significant. We are dealing with a demolition proposal in Manhattan with Chelsea Elliott and Fulton Houses. We're talking about a labor shortage due to the RAD conversions, which is what a lot of these experiences of not being able to transfer out with all of these empty apartments that we have that are just stagnant. Now, I'm a part of the Citywide Council of Presidents, which is the jurisdiction-wide resident council for the NYCHA jurisdiction, which means I'm a part of the group that represents every single household here. Now, in the same tone that we see this very hard stop on these three minutes, is how they're treating this and these conversions with this tyrannical state. Currently, I have challenged the labor shortage, in which it was redefined and told to me that it's not a labor shortage under the definition of availability instead of workload. I had challenged the Section 3, in which our communities have been obstructed over billions of dollars in the last decade, which would have changed our communities, and we would have been looking a lot different today with no need of conversions, because our communities would thrive, and they have been obstructing that. And as a C-Cop member, they have banned me with an administrative overreach from me meeting with them now, I guess because I have been too challenging. Now, we see here, when they say the resident advisory boards that they've met with us, they don't meet with us, they sit there and they inform us, they don't take our questions, and they do what they want to do. When you look at the dispositions here, do you know in the plan you have about 12 dispositions going on? Each one of those resident councils is supposed to get the first right of refusal, and none of them have got that. This is why they don't want me at the table. When you're looking at the power that we have, the overreach that they're committing, this is the problem that we have now. The fact that they say they're meeting with the Citywide Council of Presidents, they have not met with the Citywide Council of Presidents in the last three months because of this, because they banned us, they banned me, and this is a problem. And so we need to kill this illusion and start speaking to the truth. They're trying to take away what we have, and they're using us to do it. Don't let them. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez, for your comment. Next, Christina Chase.
Christina Chase, and I'm a second vice president of the Resident Association at Ravenswood Houses, and I'm also a member of Residents to Preserve Public Housing, as well as Save Section 9. My comments just got deleted, so I'm going to speak from my heart. I'm here today to put on public record that I do not support these plans, I oppose them, and I hope that comment goes directly to HUD, as well as all of our comments in opposition of these plans. Section 18 applications for demolition and disposition are not in the favor of public housing residents. We understand this as a land grab. We are not dumb. In particular, thank you, in particular Fulton, Chelsea, and Elliott Houses, we understand that that is the prioritization of private market housing over the people and the people that are the workers of New York City. It is imperative that we don't support plans of build, quote-unquote, affordable housing that is counter to what Section 9 public housing is. If we want to build more and build new, we can do that under Section 9. It's not about we don't have the money, because we have the money. If Section 8 is double the subsidy that Section 9 is, it's still coming from the same place, from the federal government. It's about political will, and it's about the prioritization of people over profit. We know, we know the contracts to be made and had and all the money to be dispersed into private pockets, but that's our tax money. This is our public housing. We've seen the privatization of hospitals, of our public schools, and now our public housing. What more can you take? And even our pensions, oh, don't even get me started. This is clear that you don't care about us. We are the working-class people, and you wouldn't, New York City wouldn't survive without us. And so in order to preserve our homes, preserve our families, and preserve the networks of care that we've established throughout decades, because we know Section 9 is the most affordable housing, we know that it is our housing stability and security for people who can't afford mortgages. But if we're going to have fair market rent, this is going to be more than what mortgages are. This is not housing preservation. This is privatization, and we don't stand for it. I don't have my notes, and I'm really upset, but I'm just here to say my opposition and to remind you that we're your neighbors. We're the people who care for you. We're the ones who teach your kids, who drive your buses, and who take care of you in the hospitals. And so we need our homes, we need to protect the homes from our public workers, and do that under Section 9. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. We're going to move to Zoom, where we have two remaining speakers. First will be Camia Jones, followed by Sheila Smalls. Camia Jones, you may unmute and proceed with your comment.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, my name is Camia Jones, and I am in NYCHA South Beach Houses in Staten Island. And I heard they say that they was going to make some improvements in Toehill, but what about over here? Because I moved over here, I'm a domestic violence survivor, and I moved over here like a year ago, and they still have not fixed anything in my apartment, really. The windows keep coming down, I got flies coming in here. So what about over here on this side? I heard you say that you're going to improve Toehill Houses, but what about over here? And thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Smalls, you may unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay, good afternoon. I'm just the TA for O'Dwyer Gardens, located out in Tony Island, Brooklyn, New York, and I oppose any, you know, anything that they have going on right now, that proposed plan that they have written for 2023 is really not for the people, it's not anything that I would recommend. I have a problem at O'Dwyer Gardens, which is, you know, something that's going to be monumental, because I'm doing a documentary on it, whereas the Sandy team came in, they got over $104,856,000 to renovate, whereas they're coming in and they did not get my approval on any of the things that they did, nor that they hire any Section 3 workers from my area. And I just find that they are wasteful of money, they perpetuate the same garbage all the time, and that we need to take them to court to uphold the 964 regulations, whereas we should have been at the table at the beginning. And all of the things that they're trying to now fix, it should not have been like that. They should have listened to us in the beginning, and they did not listen to us in the beginning, and as a result, we have to go back, and it's going to be costly to get something as simple as a bench for somebody that is handicapped. Okay, they giving us benches that don't have no backs, you know, our place is in turmoil, and management is unaccountable when we call in with problems of all different types. And we need more accountability, we need our grounds cleaned, and at this point, I find that, you know, they need to do more IU.
Thank you for your comment. We will move to two more Zoom speakers, Eugenia Gibson, followed by Dorothy Lee.
Hi, unmute. Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, as you said, my name is Eugenia Gibson. I am the TA president of Beach 41st Street of Far Rockaway, also the VP of C-Cop, second VP. Our problem here at Beach 41st Street is gas. The gas goes off, the tenants are in their apartments with no gas to cook for six months. Some have been here for a year, okay? No gas to cook, they give them a hot plate and two slow cookers to cook on. We have the park that is gone on four years, the children have nowhere to play. NYCHA sat with me three times, they did not come back to sit with me and 15 or 20 of the residents to agree on what we wanted for the parks. They came and they put what they wanted to put here, the things that they have in there for the children to play is unsafe. Some of the things, we don't know what it is. One looks like a dog park. And then they sent an email yesterday that they are ready to open up the park. This is the second time, but I am not signing off on it. It is not safe for the kids, okay? With the, which is no heat, but we have no problems with the hot water. We have a third-person vendor. As a young lady, one of the TA presidents said, when we don't have hot water or heat, we have to wait to 6:00, 7:00 the next morning for a vendor to come and fix the problem. Why can't we have HPD here from NYCHA to come and fix the problem for us? Why can't we have HPD here from NITIA to come and fix the problem for us? So we have the dogs. The dogs are pooping all over the place. And letters needs to be sent out to the tenants. We have air conditioners that are about falling out of the window. Tenants need to know that this is dangerous. This is a safety issue, not only for the tenants. It's also dangerous for the workers that are policing up under the windows to keep the grounds clean. So now not only do we have issues with the upkeep of the buildings, we having safety issues. Things need to be done and Beach 41st Street is not agreeing with the privatization of the buildings. The development is here for 50 years. Yes, we have problems, but we don't need anybody to come tear anything down, promise us new refrigerators, new floors and stuff. We are no Rat Pack privatization. Beach 41st Street is not in agreeance of it. I don't know who came up with this.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson, Gibson, for your comment. We will follow up. Dorothy Lee, you may unmute. Do we have Dorothy Lee on Zoom? We will resume with our in-person speakers. It's 7:45, so we will be hearing from our, our remaining speakers now. And as a reminder, if you are unable to provide your spoken comment today, you are still able to fill out comment cards in the front. In person, we have Prinsella Jamerson, followed by Isa Torres.
Evening, my name is Prinsella Jamerson. I'm the Resident Association President for Millbrook Houses. And I'm here to say that I oppose the Preservation Trust. First and foremost, because the implementation was without real resident engagement. And residents told NITIA that they are, they did not want the Preservation Trust even before it was changed to that name. It was the blueprint then. Under the trust, residents will still see the same kind of neglect that we see now because the trust will have no true oversight. The trust will have the authority to take on debt while using our homes as collateral. New York, NITIA, and the city will not have the obligation to step in if the trust fails to pay off the dead debt. The trust is a pathway for creditors to gain access to our homes and land. NITIA must not transfer leaseholders' interests or any repetentation of ownership to the trust. I do not believe NITIA will hold transparent and fair outreach on the election process into the trust. NITIA current leadership has invested too much in getting the trust adopted and did nothing to advocate for the funding for Section nine unit. The legislation adopted by Albany does not clearly, does not clarify how Section nine and human rights will be upheld in the election process. We demand true democratic elections in every development to be monitored by an independent party. I was going to talk about the physical needs assessment, but NITIA did a quick one and they gave it out at this meeting prior to everyone coming in. The trust legislation recently adopted in Albany does not require that NITIA disclose how much bond finances will be used for each development. NITIA must inform tenants on the bond financing expectation facing their developments. Tenants should have the opportunity to review this before voting on the trust. Here's another thing I want to say. One of the things that I really oppose about the blueprint in the trust is that the fact that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jamison, for your comment. Next, Ms. Torres. Do we have Isa Torres? Next, we have Barbara McFadden.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Barbara McFadden and I am the president of Nostrand Housing, the D-Cop Chair for Brooklyn South, and I'm the first elected vice chair on a C-Cop board. Something that people don't know about me, I don't talk about it, I be about it. I actually do the groundwork, meaning that when I'm called on duty to do something, I am there firsthand. First and foremost, I want to thank all my residents that showed up tonight, all residents on a Zoom. I want to thank the new NITIA staff, especially my CEO, Ms. Lisa. She's been doing a wonderful job with the outreach, communicating with her staff, sending Ms. Yuka Buskay and entire civic engagement team, reaching out to us, phone calls, emails. And not even to brag about it, Mr. Danny Mahir had knocked on my door two weeks ago. Exactly, he said, Ms. McFadden, we were trying to reach you. The CEO, Ms. Lisa, wanted to make sure you get this information. She understand your job as the vice chair on a C-Cop board. We didn't want to leave you or leave any residents behind. First and foremost, I was appointed to be on the trust board by Mayor Adams. I do support the trust. I don't bad influence anyone. Every tenant have the right to vote for Rat Pack. They have a right to vote for Section nine. They have a right to vote for the trust, even though I support the trust. I want to thank Yuka, Mr. Rodney, Mr. Leroy, for everything that they've been doing. I'm not just about myself, I'm about all of the residents. And first and foremost, my biggie is public safety, mental health. For those who didn't do their background on me, I grew up in Brownsville. I lived at 529 Hoppus End, which is known as Thomas Ballin Street. And from there, I went into Flavatino Plaza, 340 Miller Avenue. NITIA had definitely been good to us. They do have their flaws, but I look forward to working with the new NITIA team because I want to be part of the new generation. One of these days, I'm going to die, but I'm a help to make NITIA better for my great grandchildren and everyone else. I want to thank our CEO, Ms. Lisa Hyer. I want to thank the entire C-Cop elected board. I want to thank all my residents again. I was appointed by Mayor Adams on the trust board. I am there to see what's going on. And for those who know me, I'm not going to lead you astray because if something is not right, they say, don't be about it, talk about it. And that's McFadden, I yield.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden, for your comment. Next, we will hear from Jacqueline Lara.
Hello, okay. My name is Jacqueline Lara and I'm for Fulton Houses. And I'm opposing the demolition to our building. I love my home and I love my community. And I'm the one that watches your kids when you're working and outside hanging out or give them a drink or a hot dog or whatever. And I also want to let HUD know that I would like them not to oppose any proposal from Related Essence. And I also do not like the fact that our advocate leader speaks for me. He does not pay my rent and he does not feed my family. I speak for myself and I do not want my building demolished and I do not want Rat Pack. I want you guys to pay and fix our developments and stop this nonsense. Another thing, I was in the working group too. And it was 366 million to fix both developments, Chelsea Elliott and Fulton. Then I went to community board four and there was a meeting there. They said 478. Now it jumped to 1.5 billion. I would like to know who the hell's getting paid off to betray your tenants at NITIA, okay? You guys are getting paid off big, all right? Cut the nonsense out, stop being greedy and selfish because karma's a bitch.
Thank you for your comment. Our final speaker will be Alicia Cruz.
Hi, my name is Alexa Cruz and I'm a resident of Chelsea since 1969. And I've lived there a long time. I've worked and I'm speaking for the tenants of my buildings, the people that are vulnerable, that weren't able to speak for themselves and not, and not choosing whether they wanted to stay in NITIA or be demolished. And there were a lot of people that didn't speak any English and the tenant association were making decisions for them and they were banning them from saying anything, you know? And I go for Section nine and no demolishment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. As we conclude this evening's public hearing, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank each one of you for taking the time to be here. Whether you are a NITIA resident, board member, employee, advocate, or elected official, we are here for a common reason. Over 160,000 apartments, homes that we collectively desire to see valued, improved, and preserved. I want to acknowledge you and let you know that your voice and presence resonate. I encourage you to stay involved. Thank you and safe travels.